Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. We have a hybrid meeting here, so we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Draculich, since you're in chambers, would you please lead us? Is anybody on the phone able or on the computer able to hear that? I didn't hear anything. Commissioner Draculich, can you just do a test real quick?
Well, I didn't have my mic on when I was doing that and I wasn't there, but can you hear me now?
We can. Okay, thank you. Michelle, can we just move into roll call, please?
Okay, Alex Veltow is absent. Didi Draculich?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva?
Here. Here.
Thank you.
Oh.
Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Item number three, public comment. Do we have any public comment, Michelle?
Before I start public comment, I'd like to read this into the record. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for a public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer. If there is disruptive behavior, you will ask to leave chambers if this behavior continues. With that, we had a few items come in for just general public comment. A few items were related to future agenda items. And those were recorded and are part of the record. And I don't know if I have anybody here for public comment. Hang on just a second. I have not received any public comment forms for this item and no voicemails.
Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to item number four, which is approval of the Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of December 15th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Gower moved to approve.
Commissioner Villanueva, I actually just have a couple. I just wanted to make it clear for the record, it's not completely articulated here, all of my comments for the daybreak matter 5.4 in the minutes, so just want to incorporate the video minutes. That's all. Thank you.
Michelle, do you need anything else for that?
I'll request clarification after the meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gower?
Yes. Commissioner Munoz, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will not, I was not at that meeting, so I will not be voting. All those in favor, Michelle, do you want to do a roll call or?
Yes, let's do roll call, please.
Okay.
Okay, Kathleen Taylor?
I will be abstaining.
Didi Draculich?
Yeah.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Alex Veltow is still absent. Sylvia Villanueva?
Yes, with the changes made. So would that be a different motion or should I, can I say yes or? Okay.
Okay, moving on to item number five. This is for public hearings. Item 5.1, case number LDC 22-000329800, South Virginia. This is a request for a conditional use permit. And it looks like we might have a presentation from the applicant who is in chambers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Dave Snellgrove, Planning and Right-of-Way Manager with CFA, here representing the applicant PLW LI LLC. With me and Gary Fuller, who is representing the owner as well as available for any questions. And also, we have someone from Sprad's RV. Mark McNaca is also online. If you could bring up my presentation, Michelle. Go through this very, very quickly. I don't have many slides. There we go. Okay, so this is a conditional use permit really just for the use. And I will point out, this is the very north end of what the part that's operated as Sprad's RV, right at the corner of of South Virginia Street and South Meadows Parkway. It's a little small, but you can see in the yellow highlighted area there and point to subject property. Oops, but it's a .7 acre parcel. This property, it was identified through a review on the business license that the use of RV sales had never been identified, had never gone through any conditional use permit. It's been used in this way for over 13 years at this point. Prior to that, it was 7-Eleven. It was determined with city staff and going through this that a conditional use permit specific to that use would be necessary to get that reestablished. What's been happening is that Sprad's RV has not been storing RVs on that site probably over the past month or two while we've been getting this prepared. And we're hopeful to be able to get back to doing that relatively soon. As I said, it's been there for quite some time. One of the challenges that Sprad's has, right now, we're in the winter, which isn't the peak season for sales of RVs. So they don't have as much inventory there, but they're going to have to gear up for spring. And when they gear up for spring, they won't have as much area if they can't utilize this. So we really need to get through this and get on to an improvement. And I'll point out where that improvement is that was conditioned in so that we can get back to using the, using the site. So this is just the zoning and master planning. It's suburban mixed use and mixed use suburban, which allows for this use. And the table of uses through the code, you can see under the mixed suburban designation, automobile, truck, mobile home, RV, boat, and trailer sales or rentals is a conditional use permit. So that's why we're here this evening. Condition number five specifically addresses a sidewalk improvement. The sidewalk didn't extend down this, this frontage adjacent to this property. So one of the conditions that we'll need to meet is going, working with NDOTs, this is an NDOT right-of-way, and get a building permit in, in association with the establishment of that sidewalk. There we go. We're in agreement with the staff's recommendation and agreement with the findings. Should you have any questions? We're available to answer any of those.
Great, thank you very much. I think I see Grace on the call. Do you have a presentation?
I do. I have a brief presentation. Hopefully, I Can you guys see my screen okay? Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Grace Whitehead, Assistant Planner for the Record. Here to discuss an RV dealership on South Virginia. So the subject site is located on the southeast corner of South Meadows and South Virginia Street. For reference, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but to the north of the site is that Winco in South Reno. And then to the northwest of the site is that South Creek Shopping Center. And then the subject site is highlighted in yellow. So as Dave said, the applicant is requesting the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for an RV dealership in the mixed use suburban zone. Key issues identified during the review were site design and access and circulation. So the site is zoned mixed use suburban and is surrounded by the same zoning district. The mixed use suburban zone is intended to accommodate auto-oriented uses while serving as a transition from the suburban corridor to high-density residential or commercial type uses. And the site was restricted to an administrative office. As so as Dave said, during a business license renewal, staff identified that this site was operating as a display area, which requires a conditional use permit. So I thought I would include some historical photos from Google Earth. So the site's been operating since about 2007. It started late 2007 as an RV storage or in-display. So as you can see, in 2007, it was a 7-Eleven. There's not really any RVs there. In 2010, you can see some RVs start to be displayed on the north corner of the site. And then in 2016, it's a, looks like a fully functional RV display area. And so here's what it looks like today. This is taken from the north end of the site. It's a Google Street image. There is a condition in the staff report for these cones to be removed and replaced with a more permanent fence or gate or something of that effect to decrease cut-through traffic and increase safety on the site. And then traffic and customers will be directed to the main entrance, which is south of this parcel. So here's the site as a whole. To the right of your screen, you'll see the main entrance. And then to the left is this portion that we are entitling or here to entitle today. Here is the conditional use permit findings. Staff was able to make all applicable findings and recommends approval. Here is the recommended motion, and that's my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you very much, Grace. Commissioners, let's do disclosures and let's start with Commissioner Villanueva.
I visited the Commissioner Villanueva for the record. I visited the site and that's it.
Commissioner Draculich?
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, also familiar with the site?
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
Welcome, Commissioner Veltow.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Same disclosures.
Okay, Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item?
I did not receive any public comment, no request to speak forms and no voicemails for this item.
Thank you very much. We will close a public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant or of Grace. Does somebody want to get us started? Discussion? I don't see any hands. We can move into a motion if you guys are inclined.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Gower, thank you.
Thank you. In the case of LDC 22-000329800, South Virginia, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit subject to conditions.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will second the motion and I can also make all the findings.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. We will just do a roll call. All those are, Michelle, can you help us out, please? Or do we have any further discussion? Sorry. I don't see any hands. Okay, Michelle.
Taylor?
Yes.
Draculich?
Yes.
Gower?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Veltow?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for the presentation and good luck. Okay, we'll move on to item 5.2. This is case number LDC 22-00034, Daybreak, PUD Area 20A. This is a request for a tentative map. And I thought I saw Andy someplace within our Zoom call.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Andy Dilling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. Sorry, it took me a second to get kicked into the meeting there. I do have a presentation. Let me share my screen. Can you guys see that okay?
Yes.
All right, so the item for you right now is Daybreak Village 20A, a tentative map. Just by way of a very brief background, Daybreak was approved last year, or 2020, sorry. It was approved at 3,995 units. To date, 989 units have been approved, which, if you can see my cursor, on the east side of Steamboat Creek, Villages 23, 24, 25, and 26 were approved last year. Villages 18 and 19 were approved last year. And then, I guess, last year also, I was in front of you in December with Village 21 and Village 20C. Daybreak consists of a robust amount of open space. Thirty-six percent of the project is provided in open space by way of the formal parks, passive open space, as well as wetlands and storage areas. Some of that open space also includes the reestablishment of Thomas Creek. Twenty-five percent more flood pool storage is being provided in in the Daybreak project than what's required by code, and it is designed as a multimodal community with a number of connections to surrounding trails and open space features, including the Veterans Parkway mixed use or multi-use path. Some of the just highlights of this project, per the PUD, it does provide all of the necessary transportation improvements, subject to the traffic report that was approved with the PUD. Included with this would be connection to the Echo Valley-South Meadows intersection and installation of a traffic signal with that improvement plans or with those improvement plans, which are set to be submitted to the city here, actually, at the end of this month. We will also have connections, as shown in the exhibit, of our shared use paths, shared use paths to the other pathway systems that are surrounding the area. As I said, Daybreak's designed as a multimodal community. You'll see the roadway section here. It has the multi-use path on the main roadways as well as bike paths or bike lanes, I'm sorry, on the road itself. This project, you know, portions of it are located in current FEMA flood zones. Those will be modified with the development of the project. A conditional letter of map revision or a CLOMAR will have to be approved prior to any grading occurring on this site, and which is one of the conditions. That CLOMAR has already been submitted to, is under review. Additionally, there are some wetlands in the Daybreak project, none particularly in this area, subject to Village 20A. But just by way of kind of a general overview, the approved 404 permit would have to be in place prior to any grading. That is in the process of the mitigation plan, has conceptually been approved by the Army Corps. This project is in the mixed neighborhood zoning district as part of the PUD, which promotes missing middle housing product types. Those are those housing products that have been identified by the city as well as regional planning as being, you know, the highest needed housing types in our, in our housing market. All of the town center, which Village 20A is located in, in what we're referring to as does provide that missing middle, missing middle housing product. As you saw back in December, you approved Villages 21 and 20C. This is kind of continuation of this. This is also another small lot project that would potentially provide another 170 unit. And there are some minor modifications to those zoning districts. They include, really, it's just in this area along Veterans Parkway, there's kind of some pushing and pulling of some of those open space areas. The open space areas were really estimated during the PUD as being necessary for kind of grading and drainage. As we have got into the more detailed design, we're finding that some of those areas, especially the further south we go along Veterans, don't need to be as wide as we had originally anticipated. And so the PUD kind of anticipated some of those modifications. And so we do have the opportunity in the PUD to modify zoning districts by up to 10%. And so what we have been doing in our, in our submittals is documenting that. So this is the documentation, the table on the upper left there is the documentation of how, you know, the land use areas are kind of moving around ultimately, so that we have a running tally, so that we can ensure that we are staying underneath of that 10%. And so you'll notice, you know, the mixed neighborhood has increased project-wide, not just in this subdivision, by 2.4%. Open space has increased actually by .1%. So, you know, some, losing some open space here. We're gating quite a bit more in other areas is kind of the bottom line there. And this is 106 lots. It's a single-family detached, small lot, small lot product. There are 3,000 square foot lots that are generally 40 foot by 70 foot wide. So they're a very compact lot. Parking is provided by way of two to three spaces on each site. Each model or each or plan would provide at least a two-car garage. Some have an additional driveway space. And there would be on-street parking. These are a full local street section. Just giving you a little bit of an idea of kind of the streetscape and some of the varied kind of driveways and setbacks that we would have. It provides a more than, you know, your kind of tradition. But that, we're in agreement with staff's recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Brooklyn, are you available to give a presentation?
I am. All right, just to verify everyone can see that. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. Nice to see you all, Planning Commission, albeit virtual again. But very nice to see you all. So as I think Andy did a very thorough job of sort of defining the project, the history of the project, and kind of bringing you up to date on that. Kind of run through staff's now, how we looked at that. Once again, it's 900 acre site. This site's approximately 19 acres. We're looking at a Did I bring up the right one? Yeah, 106 single-family detached dwelling units, coming in about an average density of 11 dwelling units per acre. We are going roughly from 3,000 to 6,500 square foot lots. The 6,500s, it's the configuration, corner lots and some of the configuration that's a little odd that bumps those up. But the predominant is 3,000 square foot lots, so very compact lot for a single-family residential. We have been keeping a tally of the approved lots. There are remaining 2,836 lots remaining in this PUD. Well, I have this map up just to go over. Andy sort of went over what has been approved as the tentative map. As we're looking at that east side, that 23, 24, 25, 26, that's where we saw a lot of those conditions for that feral horse fencing along that side. So as we move across, that has, they are in the process of fencing that and gating that and then connecting into the Veterans Parkway fencing. So we wouldn't have any associated fencing or feral horse issues on this site. Quickly looking at the analysis and the conditions, you know, the general site design and architecture meets the PUD handbook, where it's not referenced in the PU handbook, we go down, go back to Reno Municipal Code. It does meet all that from parking, setback standards, and review. Compatibility with surrounding uses, we are seeing, as you've seen, the previous tentative maps, very consistent in a small lot project and then product, and then we are seeing some of that attached product up towards Talis Valley Parkway. Traffic access and circulation, we have that main back road of Talis Valley coming in to service that, as Andy mentioned, as the traffic report will indicate, when a stoplight would be seen at South Meadows Parkway and that Talis Valley being brought into that. The provision of utilities and services, they are in closer area. Everything will be brought to the site. There is a condition that basically says each one of these tentative maps has to be able to independently stand alone. That way, if they're sold, they can, that person will have to install all utilities, access, roadways to get that in. And so that we're making sure that, that no development gets stranded or, or is isolated. Those environmental and cultural resources, a full inventory's been done on that. As Andy mentioned, the 404 is in process, not necessarily associated with this site, but that is there. We are looking the other environmental of remediation for mercury and the the CLOMAR and FOMAR. That phasing of infrastructure coming in once again to, to suit those needs as development occurs. And then looking at that master plan conformance. Once again, this, the PUD actually is set around the reimagine Reno master plan. Policies are directly related into that, that PUD handbook. And this is in substantial conformance with the master plan policies. Leave you with the recommend, recommendation. Staff can make all the findings and recommends approval of the tentative map. Available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooklyn. Commissioners, let's have disclosures and we'll just start with Commissioner Villanueva again.
Commissioner Villanueva, for the record, familiar with the site, ready mouse?
Commissioner Draculich?
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Veltow?
Commissioner Veltow, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
And Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I did not receive any public comment cards, no request to speak forms and no voicemails.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Let's go to chambers. Does anybody have questions? Commissioner Draculich, Commissioner Villanueva? Commissioner Villanueva?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, to save time, I just want to incorporate by reference all my comments and statements and concerns raised during the December 15th meeting. As mentioned earlier, the minutes don't include everything, but the video does, so just include those records or that transcript as well. Thank you.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson?
Question, Andy. Trying to understand, and I guess this is just a tentative mapping thing, but I'm not sure how it relates to some of the development. But I'm basically looking at that southeast corner. Lots 18, 19, and 20 appear to be served by, at least from the section, it's a private shared driveway. So I understand there's, you know, the roadway. How does that? How does that function with respect to the adjacent tentative maps? Is it just an easement reserved in perpetuity or is there some ownership of that? How is that factored in as part of the mapping process?
Sure, those would actually be mapped as common areas. So it'd be a common area with an access easement to provide access to those, you know, two or three lots, I think it is. And so because it's common area, it'd be maintained by the homeowners association.
Okay, so whoever buys those lots doesn't have to shovel their driveway, is what you're telling me?
They would have to shovel their driveway, not the shared little access road that provides access to their driveway.
Okay. I appreciate that. I guess I just a follow-up with, with Brooke. So that I'm seeing, at least in the section, that's a 25-foot wide roadway section, so assuming two lanes of traffic. Are there any issues from the city standpoint with the amount of space that's been left over to allow for that?
No, in review, we didn't have any issues or, or flag any issues on that. Additionally, Mike, Michelle, our engineering manager is on. If you have any additional engineering questions, if that answers your question.
No, it does. I think this is obviously kind of leading into the next tentative map that we're looking at. So I'm just trying to understand how this all works together. So thank you, Madam Chair. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Gower?
You saw me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of quick questions. First one, similar to Commissioner Johnson's question. Maybe Andy, you can confirm the connectivity between these units? So looking at the same site plan that Commissioner Johnson was looking at, for example, Street G is, it's listed. So just confirming that that's going to continue and connect to Area 20C. We're not going to have like these strange fire access gates or anything like that?
No, yeah, no, you're, you're correct. And actually, but if you want me to share my screen again, it was in the presentation. But no, it, it's all interconnected, so that connects into 20C kind of had a looped kind of main road, and so that provides access into there. It is secondary access, so all these subdivisions have to stand on their own. So every subdivision that we're, every tentative map that we've submitted, you know, if you look at the plan set, I mean, it shows all of the backbone road, all of the necessary, you know, shared roadways that would have to be constructed in order to build that subdivision on its own. You know, shared roadways that would have to be constructed in order to build that subdivision on its own. And so in this case, yeah, that it's shown as a stubbed roadway on this one, but it connects in with the remainder of the already approved tentative maps to the south.
Is that a, is that built into the handbook as a condition to provide that connectivity from unit to unit?
No, not necessarily. It's more code. So we're make, we're making sure that that, you know, each subdivision is going to have its necessary secondary access. And when we're looping roads like that, just making sure that, you know, we have two means in and out of each kind of individual subdivision.
Maybe Brooke, if I can follow up with you on that one.
Yes.
I think you know where I'm getting, what I'm getting at here is just making sure that. You know, these future residents have the ability to, you know, move through within, you know, in and out of these. It's essentially standalone subdivisions and that is the city we're ensuring that's going to happen.
Correct. As you can, as Andy mentioned, we're seeing those double access on each tentative map. And then we're seeing that connectivity to those previous tentative maps to the south. You see that connectivity. That's a previous approved tentative map by, by this commission that connects there. And then you can see towards the top, we'll see those future villages coming in and connecting there. So not only do we have full service fire access to each tentative map. Those tentative maps are all interconnective, providing connectivity across the entire site there.
Right. I appreciate that confirmation. I guess on a similar point to condition number eight, the. Believe it's the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity plan. If that was the name of it, I just lost it. I understand that's a, a plan that's being developed. At what point does staff see that? And would that be available as we kind of get into these? You know, reviews of these tentative maps for subsequent phases of the project that we might see a draft or something of that?
Sure, within the, we have, within the staff report, we are seeing that connectivity, that overall connectivity plan coming in there. That'll be a multitude of things. That'll be sidewalk. That's going to be that multi-use path that you're going to see along the main Talis Road. Those bike lanes that are going to be associated with the main Talis Road off into the neighborhoods. Additionally, we have the great advantage of having that regional trail systems there. And that really promoting that overall connectivity into that regional trail system, both on the east side and those tentative maps we approved over there. And those ensure that that will be across the roadway, across Steamboat Creek as they go across Steamboat Creek, connecting into that. And then that this development will through sidewalks and other. Multimodal methods connect into that regional system. So overall, we should see a connectivity at a local level within those neighborhoods through sidewalks and the trail system, main trail system. And then really connecting into that larger regional system as we move forward.
That's great. I guess, did you have something else or?
Well, I was just going to say what, what we'll do, you know, in the tentative map as we move through the final map and this condition is there, they will be submitting, you know, formal plans. We'll be reviewing those to ensure that we are making sure that we get those connectivity and that connection that we want to see out in that area to. The regional system, those other trail systems that we have in the local PUDs and making sure we're creating that overall connectivity out in that South Meadows area.
That's fantastic.
Madam Chair, I was just maybe to jump in. We have been submitting schematic level with the tentative map connectivity plans showing how. The trail systems with this individual subdivision kind of work within the general area as well as the surrounding communities. Connections to schools, you know, things like that, existing schools and planned schools. So we have been submitting that with the tentative maps. And then it would just be formalized in those improvement plans with this condition.
Last question on that theme. Brooke or Andy, do you know is part of the, I guess, the regional improvements of. You know, pedestrian access in this area, if there are any plans to add. Sidewalk or a trail on the west side of South Meadows Parkway?
I think you mean the north side of South Meadows Parkway. And yeah, so on, on the daybreak side of South Meadows Parkway, yes, there would be sidewalk. Yeah, there would be sidewalk added. Then we have a trail that runs north to south on the west side of Veterans as well. That ultimately will provide trail access connecting into a future signal on Veterans Parkway. That would pride, provide then a safe access across Veterans Parkway to the Veterans Trail.
Great. No, it's excellent to hear all the, the connectivity and, you know, keeping, keeping that topic on the forefront. So I appreciate all those responses.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion? I don't see any hands. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dracula, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
In the matter of case number L D C two two dash zero 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 three four, Daybreak P U D area twenty A. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend the planning commission approve the tentative map subject to conditions and I can meet the findings.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Veltow, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Michelle, can we do a vote, please?
Taylor.
Yes.
Dracula.
Yes.
Gower.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Munoz.
Yes.
Belto.
Yes.
Villanueva.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I'd say goodbye, Andy, but I think you're up next too. So we'll move on to item five point four.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, five point three.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dracula, sorry. Just for the gentleman in the chambers, sorry to interrupt, but are you waiting for item five point four by chance? Or what, what item are you waiting for? I say that because I believe that last item is polled and I didn't want him to wait in the chambers any longer to find out.
Thank you, Commissioner Dracula. Just.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, I thought it earlier too, brother. I was just going to sit here and learn the hard way. You're welcome.
So does somebody want to stay and make public comment under five point four?
He was here for five point four. He just wanted to listen. That item was pulled, so we can't even open it and take.
Okay, okay.
Because it was noticed incorrectly.
Okay. I guess he could have gone under general public comment, but if you just want to listen, that's good. Okay, are we ready to get back to the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Item five point three, this is case number L D C two two dash zero zero zero. Three five Daybreak P U D. This is a request for a tentative map. Andy, do you have a presentation? Looks like you do.
I do. Thank you. Again, Andy Dilling with Wood Rogers representing the project or the applicant for David Village twenty B tentative map request. I will, if it's okay by you, kind of skip through. Obviously, we just, we just saw this. You saw it last month as well, but just to reiterate. A plan due to development, master plan community. We talked about the connectivity on the last item. Omar. And if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to bring Q and A. So specifics on this project, again, with the, you know, minor modifications that we're able to make as part of the P U D. This, you know, if you see the last kind of pod of units on this project. Kind of snuck into the commercial zoning there. The use is allowed in both the mixed neighborhood, which is the orange, as well as the neighborhood commercial. Yeah, really the change here is to have consistent setbacks. The setbacks in each of those is a little different. And so to have a consistent for the product type, it really made sense. So that's the, the change, the justification for the change there. And again, we are keeping a running tally of that. We're submitting that with each tentative map to make sure that we are staying under that ten percent modification to any of the designations here. Village twenty B is sixty four lots. This is a single family attached duet style project. So the duet references a shared wall that would be shared between two units. Is alley loaded, so each, it basically is designed in kind of these pods of eight or these eight packs, you know, we've called it different. Eight packs with a shared alley that goes down the middle. The garages are all off of the alley and then actually the front doors are on the opposite side of the house. And they face towards either a street or towards kind of a greenway or passeo that's in the center between, between the houses. So it's kind of a, this hybrid type development where you own kind of your single family lot. You have a small yard area, but it opens up to a more communal type. Atmosphere and, and you know, with walking paths and things like that. Each lot is, is twenty two hundred square feet, is forty three by fifty three feet. Parking is provided per the beauty and per code. With two garage spaces and then the guest parking is being provided on the adjacent kind of local street here. We do have the advantage because there's no garages or frontages on this street. There's a lot of, actually a lot of parking along there because it's all either the side loading from. Villages twenty A, twenty B, and then a future Village sixteen A or this Village twenty B. And to give you a little bit of an idea of kind of the floor plans on these, they are, like I said, duets, they share a wall. The wall is actually shared at the garage. So there's no living space that is shared. So it's, you know, you kind of, it's a nicer environment to where. Neighbor, you know, making noise or. And you're hearing it, right? Turned a garage, which is not a livable space. Are eight homes. It's got, the garages are, like I said, are on the alley with a small apron. This, the alley width is enough to provide the backup space out of the garages, but it would not allow for parking within the alley. They're sliding and each of the, you know, and then each of the units you'll see has kind of a small patio yard area that then opens up kind of from the courtyard onto that. That passeo that would be on the back of the house, but really it lives like the front of the house. So with that, we're in agreement with staff's recommendations and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Brooklyn, are you available for a presentation?
I am. Let's see. Right there. Let's again, good evening, Planning Commission, Brooke Oswald, the Associate Planner for the Record. Running through this again. The overall project site, Andy went through that. Our units, we calculated both in that unit count, still a number of units. That area twenty B, as, as was shown in Andy's previous, we're seeing down that main network, we're seeing that denser. Housing both on the twenty B side and we're sort of seeing that, we're seeing that on a nineteen portion of nineteen along that. So creating that great stream, stream image down along that area. Once again, we're coming in about eleven dwelling units per acre on that total of a twelve acre site and getting sixty four units on those twelve acres. Very similar to the last one. I think what was unique and we can kind of talk to this a little bit more. I think this shows it as we see this roadway coming in through, through here off our main backbone roadway of Talis Park. This is where we're connecting into those tentative maps that you've been seeing. So each one, it maintains that connected connectivity. But, but can function on its own as we, as we want to see, making sure that we're, we're protecting each individual tentative map. We went through the traffic and access. This is similar, runs, runs through the main backbone road. Provisions of utilities and services are in place. It can be run. I think I, I would like to just talk briefly. We have two additional tentative maps that staff is currently under reviewing and you'll see within the next couple of planning commissions. That will kind of fall out that last area of this section up into the proposed roadway that will connect with Veterans Parkway. With that, in the future, what we'll see is those consecutive parcel maps. So we've now sort of gone through and continue to move and have approved these tentative maps. And as if these, this tentative map and the future tentative maps are approved, we'd see a parcelling map that would basically subdivide each one of these tentative maps. And so those could be sold in the future. So just want to give you a heads up, that's going. I'll try to give a good, I know we've had confusion of that in the past, so I want to make sure. You know that's coming and I'll write a good description of that and so that we can, we can have a good discussion and clarity on that. Because that is sort of a new process that we're, we're working specifically within Daybreak on. So staff can make all the findings and recommends approval of the tentative map based on the, the. Subject to the conditions lifted, listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooklyn. Okay, commissioners, we'll do disclosures again and we'll start with Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Dracula, familiar with the site, read and received emails.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Veltow?
Commissioner Veltow, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Gower, same disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
Same disclosures.
And Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I did not receive any public comment, voicemails or request to speak forms.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring them back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or Brooklyn. Anybody in the chambers, Commissioner Villanueva?
Commissioner Villanueva echoing statements from the last agenda item for Daybreak and the December fifteenth Daybreak tentative maps for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to spread out my comments here across these two items. This time I wanted to ask about schools and. Brooke, relative to tentative map finding four, which is the availability of services, including schools. So in our agency comment letters, we've got the letter from, I guess it's an email from Brett to you. Identifying the capacity or anticipated capacity of schools. And it looks like Poliquita's Elementary is looking at some capacity issues going down. The road twenty six, twenty seven and twenty thirty one, thirty two at hundred and forty two percent. How is staff looking at that relative to tentative map finding four?
Certainly, we're, you know, we're continuing to work with the school district as we go through this. One of the unique things about this development is. I guess there's two things. We'll, we'll see a site. The, the school district has site selection within this P U D. So when they're, when they feel they are ready for a school. They can, as these tentative maps or it comes in, they can choose where they would like to, to see a school. So we'd anticipate probably on this, this. On this, let's see, what would it be? The western, southwestern portion that we will see an elementary school going in, in that. The applicant has an agreement with the school district for that site selection and the process of them acquiring the land and, and the services and everything that'll be there. So that is in place and it's really up to when the school district fills and makes the determination that they're reaching those capacities. They have the ability to move forward and build a school within this development.
Did the handbook identify a trigger in terms of units or is it just based on the, the metrics that the school district develops?
Yeah, we go back to the, the sort of professional planning of the, the school district and them planning on because they, they can also, they may redistrict, they may bus. They, they have other mechanisms that they can relieve pressure off of schools. And so we stayed away from a trigger specifically on, on population and let the school district decide. And really the advantage of this, we'll see two, we'll see an elementary school and we'll see the potential for a high school in this area in the future if, if determined necessary. Additionally, there's other capacity for charter schools and other, other schooling systems within this development.
And as part of that, so the school district identifies the need, they're ready to build the school, the handbook and the process. Provides for the other infrastructure to support the school, like we're talking about the connectivity with the sidewalks, the streets, obviously sewer water. That's all, that has to be in place before any sort of school comes online, right?
Correct. What we would see and, and for the agreement and, and the, the sale of that property to the school district. It would be all services provided to the site that, you know, the roadways in. We'd anticipate the school coming in and probably finishing out the sidewalks or any adjacent sidewalks or any, any infrastructure needed with that access when the school came in.
All right, last question, related theme. What is the timing of the parks? Similar question to the schools. I mean, you've got these units coming online. Brooke, can you remind me of what the, the process is for having those parks come online?
Yeah, so each, each, there's one main park, that, that larger ten acre plus park, that, that central park. Yeah, so each, there's one main park, that larger 10-acre-plus park, that Central Park, that is in, and I might have to defer back to Andy, but I believe that's in Phase Two, coming into this Phase Two portion of this. So we should be seeing that towards the latter part of this development of Phase Two being proposed. And, you know, that goes to the cities, reviewed by the city, our Parks Department, that will be a public park. Additionally, we have private parks within the development that we'll probably see, I think there's two, two to three acres of parks need to be developed in both that northern quadrant and that southern quadrant. So we'd anticipate additional open space parks or other sort of amenities like that coming in within within each one of those other sections outside of the larger park. And those are sort of probably, as the development comes, they'll be incorporated within to the overall sort of tentative maps and developments. And I think they have probably an area slated that they're going to move forward with a park in the future.
Thanks, Brooke. Andy, unless you had anything to add, that's all I've got, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I should have a quick discussion item that I wanted to throw out there. I actually am excited about seeing how this particular site development layout will work. The idea of alley loading to sort of facilitate a little bit higher level of density, but combined with still that front yard and walkable aspect, especially coming off the main backbone roadway there. I think just looking at the landscape plan and seeing for that, the main road and how this would actually have a number of sort of sidewalks cutting through the houses that, you know, isn't walled off by a bunch of fences. So I think it's an interesting approach to doing a little bit more density on a site like this. So I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to seeing how it works and seeing how it comes together. I think we saw something similar to this over off of Zalesi a couple of months ago that didn't have quite the same walkway and front door that this does. So I think this is sort of a nice way of approaching the site design. So I just wanted to get that on the record, that it's not, you know, we're not looking at sort of that same level of development that we had been seeing on others. So I appreciate that opportunity to just make that comment.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dragic.
Just wanted to go in agreement with Commissioner Johnson there. I agree. When I saw this, it was kind of exciting to see how they're being creative with site mapping. I'm in agreement with him.
And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, the item case number LDC 22-00035 Daybreak PUD, Area 20B. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I recommend Planning Commission approve the tentative map, subject to the conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Dragic, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please take vote, take a roll call?
Taylor?
Yes.
Dragic?
Yes.
Gower?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Velto?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Thank you, commissioners. And then item 5.4 was pooled for a noticing error. I apologize, I did not say that at the beginning of the meeting. But we will move into item number six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a regional planning meeting next Thursday. We haven't had one since the last meeting. So a few items on, I believe the agenda on that is coming out tomorrow for review, and that will, I believe, continue the same hybrid format of meeting for both in person and on Zoom as they've been doing, so.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number seven. Jason, good to have you there.
Good evening, commissioners. A pleasure being here. Jason Garcia-Laboo with the City of Reno, Planning Manager. Just to update you, our Development Services Branch has been very busy in the start of 2022. Number of ongoing items. Just wanted to give a brief update on some of the projects that we're working on. There's the draft tree protection ordinance that is proposing amendments to Title VIII and Title 18. And that's, that draft is available on our website. For anybody listening out there in the public, it's www.reno.gov/trees. And it's currently a public review period. At the month of January, we've seen a number of public workshops. There's 10 meetings. There's four remaining in the next week or so. After, after those meetings conclude or those workshops conclude, the Reno Urban Forestry Commission will take those comments and a draft will be updated. And it's anticipated to bring that back to this commission in March, probably. So late February or March, but probably the first meeting in March. In addition to that, the the Title 18 code on January 13th, the old code period of review, our last intake on January 10th ended. And so in essence, if you'll remember with the adoption of the new code back in January 13th of 2021, a one-year time period was put into place where applicants could propose projects utilizing the old code. As of basically last intake, that period has now expired. So moving forward, the new code is kind of in role and effect to those new applications that we receive. Old code is still being reviewed for current projects processing through the system if it was requested. So you may see that over the next couple of meetings. If there's any questions or clarifications on that, I'd be happy to answer that. But that's in kind of re-implementing that new code that was adopted last year. In addition to that, the city is looking at several different programs. More recently, the Carbon Footprint Project and Sustainability project that the City of Reno has taken on. We're looking to bring a presentation to this commission on February 16th. We'll have city staff as well as Adam Kramer to come have a little presentation and answer any questions regarding that. There was a press release in December regarding that program. In addition to that, many of you are aware of the Affordable Housing Program discussion. The city manager's office is taking lead on that initiative, and at this point, it's still in discussions, but they're looking to set up a program that will include policy discussion and potentially code amendment updates in the future. In addition to those items for those projects, the Development Services Branch, we're looking to bring some trainings to the commission. We're looking at outreach to the American Planning Association for specific planning commission training. I think that's good not only for our city staff, but also the commission here. I think there's a lot of items that we could kind of learn from on that. So we're looking at putting that together. And then I think that was mostly it for the Development Services updates. On the January 12th City Council, there were a number of planning items. And with that, there were a number of second readings of ordinances of some of the projects that this commission had recommended approval for the council back in December. That included the Warren Way Project and the North Valleys Distribution Center rezoning. And then last week as well, there's a lot of discussion regarding the several abandonment projects and the Neon Line meeting that was set up. And many of you were probably participating or observed that. Brooke on our staff here that did the presentations a few minutes ago was there to answer questions along with some other city staff and kind of educate or answer any questions that the public had on that. So in addition to that, kind of looking forward in our February 2nd meeting, it looks like we have two items, the Pivon, Pivon item that's being rescheduled and the Washoe Valley Safe Camp. So that was all the updates that I have. I know it was a mouthful, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Jason. Sounds like you're busy and stepping right into the swing of things. Commissioners, questions for Jason?
Madam Chair, just a kind of a comment slash question. Received an email. I don't know if it went to everybody or me based on sort of the architectural aspect of things, but Development Services reached out with a sort of a one-year deadline on the new Title 18, seeking additional input on potential conflicts or issues sort of within the code. And it identified a number of places where you've already, you know, found either broken references or listings of, I like the 35-millimeter film requirement for a submittal. That was a good item to be found there. So I'd like to applaud Development Services for reaching out that way. And I guess the question is, if there's a timeline to bring that together to make those revisions, which would then, I guess, find its way to this body and council for adoption of whatever those changes might be.
And with that, I'd say that it really depends on the amendments at hand there. I'll let you know right now, staff has been putting together an ongoing list, and it's of 120 different items where we found. So some small, some big, but we definitely like to start bringing some of those changes forward. But there are certain items, like some of the amendments that we discussed, tree protection and other items that are already kind of in draft that you may see sooner rather than some of those other items. But that's where we're looking at really reaching out to the community. And so Angela Foose with our Development Services Department did email a number of people in the development community, basically asking or seeking input regarding some of those areas where they've found that there's issues, conflicts, like you were speaking to, Commissioner Johnson. So we're definitely, at this point, we don't have a timeline on that, but it is something that we have an ongoing list on, and we would like to bring forward because it'll help the just city staff when we're bringing projects forward be more consistent.
And I appreciate that. Like I said, I think it's a great idea, and maybe the question I would have is on a situation like that where I think there was a couple of references of actual conflict between the code. Are those being, you know, if it comes in on any project, is staff essentially working with an applicant to use the preferred method, or is that, really, are we looking at such small things that it hasn't been an issue and it just gets clarified as necessary?
It's a mix of both. It's a mix of both, but we do work with the applicants on the design of the project, and we do have a pre-application process as well where we meet with applicants to try to let them know our city code and help help educate the applicants on the city process if they don't know, or even if the regular agents meet with us, we kind of walk through and look at the design of the project to to make sure that it fits code or meets code and work through any kind of issues that come up.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have a couple, one question, if that's okay.
Sure. Commissioner Villanueva?
And Commissioner Johnson, great questions, because that was really informative. For staff direction, what's the timeline for some of those staff responses? I know there was one or two that I raised last year shortly after starting. One was for capacity in North Reno, the sewer capacity in North Reno, a briefing or presentation on that. Is that, I know you guys are overwhelmed and really busy right now, but what's the timeline on receiving responses for some of those requests?
Well, I would say it just depends on what we're doing in terms of a response. Some responses will be through a presentation, and so that might be, you know, a few meetings out, which translates into, you know, a couple of months. But if there's smaller items that we can follow up or I can bring up through these updates, I'd be happy to do that. So I'll follow up with you just to make sure that we kind of covered those items as well.
Yeah, I can touch base, I'll email you. I can touch base with you. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions for Jason? Okay, moving on to item number eight, Commissioner's suggestions for future items. I don't see any hands. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, public comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll close public comment, move in item number 10, adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night, everyone. Thank you.